All right, we are ready to go at six thirty, so welcome everybody. It's always nice to see a full house over here. So at this time, I'm going to call this meeting to order, the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Town of Waxaw, November twenty second, two thousand and twenty-two. So at this time, adoption of the agenda or any changes? Do I have changes requested?
I'm Mr. Mayor.
Oh, that's right. Got one.
And apologize for my voice, but a little, little raspy today, but under presentations have a request to add Waxaw Fire Chief Greg Sharp to the agenda to talk about Thanksgiving safety tips.
Okay, very good. Any other requests and changes?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to request item J four be tabled until December thirteenth. This item popped up on the agenda on Thursday. I've been, Charlie and I have been trying to connect together. Our schedules just haven't meshed, so I would value an opportunity to.
All right, and we'd have to vote on the change of agenda, or if we want to pull it off. Yeah, have to vote. Okay. So, all right, so we. I like that part. All right. That said, makes it a little bit interesting this late in the game. All right, so any comments, thoughts from anybody besides that? On the first item, we know that the chief is going to be our second item. Let's talk about that, I guess.
Well, I, oh, sorry, sorry to interrupt you.
Go ahead, Tracy, I'm sorry.
Well, I just question if, what happens with a lapse in not having a contract, so I'm not sure that we should be pulling it off. Maybe discussion is better.
Did we receive this information of the time to go through it or?
All right, well, it'll be up to you guys whether you want to pull it or not, or you want to have it continue as discussion. So can I have a motion then?
Will be any judgmental fact of the.
It will be without representation.
Charlie?
That's correct. That will no longer be the town attorney if it's not.
We'll not have a town attorney.
I would not recommend that we do that.
Any other thoughts? Make a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda with the addition of Greg Sharp's presentation and the rest of the agenda as published.
All right, go around, Commissioner Maury.
Aye.
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 Mayor Protem?
Aye.
Okay, very good. All right, it will remain on, and we'll jump down to the next one here, so then I have a motion then to adopt the agenda as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so adoption is approved as amended. I'm going to defer to Commissioner Simpson for tonight's ceremonial opening and a comment.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, I asked the mayor if I could do the ceremonial open, so before we do the pledge, I want to offer a moment of silence tonight to the tragic loss of the two W B T V staff members. One was the pilot Chip Tagg, and the other one is meteorologist Jason Myers, and Jason Myers is my next door neighbor. He leaves a wife, four children. He's, was an extraordinary father and person, so I just want you to keep Jason and his family, as well as the pilot and their family, in our thoughts and prayers, especially over this Thanksgiving season when we're counting our blessings, so if you would all please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Certainly, our condolences go out to that family. It's a very difficult time of year to have something like that happen, so thank you for that. All right, under tonight, there are no general public comments. Let's have a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda as published. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
All the way around. All right, we're going to jump down real quick, down to recognitions, and I'm going to turn this one over first to our town manager.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and I guess as they make their way up here, I'm pleased to announce that the, the tag interim is no more with our Mr. Greg Collins, and like to introduce to the public here, their new permanent police chief, Mr. Greg Collins. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you. I think you've been able to tell over the last couple of weeks, I'm super excited to be here and even more excited to be able to continue my, my tenure here for a few years and continue to make some of the changes that I've, I've tried to instill and hope that everybody's really seen that, especially the, the town employees. You know, it's my promise to keep, keep working on that and listening to our employees and to everybody else that's got some suggestions. So thank you very much.
Welcome to the team, no pressure. Welcome to the team.
Thank you. All right, um, tonight, I have the honor of introducing one of our administrative assistants, Christina Long. The young man back there that was supposed to come up with her is her, her, her son, Evan.
House.
Evan. Um, if you remember, two weeks ago, I talked about Christina for just a few minutes. Um, as we were getting ready for the meeting, I was walking back and forth and heard her on the phone. It was election night, and she's fielding phone calls for people that are trying to figure out where their polling station was, which certainly is not in the job description of a police administrative assistant, but she smiles more than any two people I know. She's got the voice of an angel, as you can remember from hearing at the, the veterans' celebration at the school. Um, cannot say more about her customer service skills and, and what she does makes us successful, and she would actually like to take a minute and introduce herself as well.
You made her blush.
I know. I don't do public speaking very often, but good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, and Waxaw citizens and PD family back there. I am, for those who don't know, I'm Christina Long, and I am a proud mother of an eighteen-year-old girl who is currently right now at seven oh one Main working, so she couldn't be with me tonight, and a fourteen-year-old boy, Evan, he's in high school now. And I just, I think I just wanted to say that I do love my job very much and my work family, and I still, I still remember one of the questions that I was asked during my interview, and they asked me, why do I want to work with Waxaw Police Department? And my answer is still the same today. It is, I wanted to be a support to those who serve and protect, and also to the town and its people. I just appreciate having my job, and I look forward to learning and growing with you all. Thank you.
Thank you, and we look forward to you singing more. All right, thank you for that. All right, next up, presentations, we're going to have Chief Greg Sharp. Come on up. So Chief is going to show us not, how not to burn our houses down, right?
Yes. Um, so I'd like to thank Commissioner Hall for thinking about inviting me here to, to do this. Um, I've really enjoyed the fact over the last several years that we've continued to build a very strong partnership between the fire department and the town, and I second the words of Christina, and that was a, it's a tough one to follow. But, all right, so the idea was, you know, we're in the Thanksgiving holiday, and I want to throw in there too, winter has started. Um, I don't know how many of you had your heat come on for the first time, or unfortunately, maybe you went and thought your heat was going to come on and woke up and it was darn right chilly, right? Actually, our firefighters down at the new renovated station woke up and they're like, why is it so cold? Well, they forgot to turn the gas on to the furnace when they installed it back in the summertime, so tonight they have heat. Last night, not so much. So what does that happen? What, what happens when you go and you want to make sure your house is heated? There's all kinds of avenues people take, but we'll start with Thanksgiving. Unattended cooking is the leading factor in cooking fires and fire deaths. Um, when you look at that, cooking causes half of all house fires. I thought it was higher than that, so it's kind of surprises down. And then two out of every five home fire injuries, and the leading cause of fire deaths is unattended, basically unattended cooking generally. You know, people just, they get going, they get doing stuff, and the Thanksgiving holiday is the big one. You've got a whole bunch of people in the house, you've got a whole bunch of things cooking, a whole bunch of things going on, and you're cooking away, and then you just go away for just a minute, and that's just how long it takes. So how do we avoid that? One, I was surprised at this one. I thought they'd just say be careful with it, but the NF, the National Fire Protection Association says, do not use turkey fryers that use oil. They are absolutely unsafe, and they caused a number of devastating fires over the years, and they've killed a few people. If you happen to have an oil-based turkey fryer, please thaw the turkey before you put it in there, because if you don't, it's no longer Thanksgiving, it's July fourth. Okay? Two, there's a great video on the N F K website about this, do not fill the turkey fryer completely full of oil and then put the turkey in, because the oil will overflow and it will ignite. Their recommendation is if you really want to fry a turkey, buy one. Uh, they do have air fryers out there, but those are pretty big, but, uh, and again, like they said, don't leave cooking unattended regardless of where it is, okay? Most stuff starts actually on the stove. Use a timer to remind you, and always keep, and this is another one, hard one on Thanksgiving holiday and Christmas, the, those are the two biggest times for cooking fires, leave that area clear. Don't have all the mits and gl, and towels and everything else hanging around, because those tend to catch fire, okay? Uh, they do say keep a lid nearby, so if you have a small grease fire start up, just put a lid on it and it'll go out, okay? If it gets, outside the pan, just leave. Please get out of the house and call us, we'll come take care of it, because it's, it's just not going to go out throwing baking soda on it. Another big tip is keep kids away. Um, I can remember my sister was three, four years old, she walked up behind my mother, mother had the stove door open, and she just laid those hands right on the inside of that stove. Uh, they didn't stay there long. So keep the kids away, have a, they even say sometimes put a little tape around your stove, so the kids won't cross the tape line. So again, like it said there, Thanksgiving is the leading day for home fires. Christmas and follows second, Christmas Eve is third. So you, you look at your annual heating equipment problems. Forty-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty house fires a year caused by heating equipment. Most of that is block chimneys, chimney fires. Five hundred deaths a year, thirteen hundred injuries, and one point one billion dollars in property damage. One of those is every seven home fires and one every five deaths. Again, it's the chimney, so make sure if you're going to have a wood fire, make sure that chimney's been cleaned at least once a year. Make sure your furnace is checked on a regular, on, you know, before you really kick it off and get it going. Others are, you get those space heaters and you get stuff too close, or you put it off in the corner to heat the whole room so it's out of the way, so you don't trip over it, and it's too close to the curtains, or something else gets on top of it, and that'll catch fire. Another big thing on space heater, especially kerosene, people try and put gasoline on them, or diesel fuel or something, put the right fuel in it, and make sure there's space around it again, so it doesn't catch fire and you don't kick it over. And then, again, you would, this is kind of obvious, January fifth and December is when half of these fires start, because that's when it gets really cold. And I have seen people try and heat their house with a toaster oven. Do not use the oven, toaster oven, that stuff to try and heat your house, you know, use an appropriate heating appliance. I talked about that, keep everything away, um, and keep everything clean. The last thing I'll say about it is, keep your smoke detectors, make sure the batteries have been changed, they should have been changed when we dropped back on the, on the clocks, and make sure you got a good carbon dioxide detector, because furnaces leak, chimneys leak, and carbon dioxide can kill you just as much as smoke can, so keep those up to date, batteries charged and powered up, and have a wonderful and safe holiday.
Thank you, appreciate that. I know you're not looking for extra work over the holidays, so. Thank you for that. All right, we're going to drop down to the public hearings. We have a couple of things to discuss tonight, so the process will be, we will open the public hearings and cover both items at the end of the first presentation. We will then allow a couple of public comments. So I'm going to start with, the first is us bringing firm motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
All the way around, okay. We are open. First presenter, Lisa Thompson, who's our Planning and Inspections Director. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Again, what are you going to talk to us about? I'll let you start.
Of staffs here tonight, um, we received a request submitted by Mingram Kelly. It's to permanently close right-of-way, consists of an unopened, unimproved portion of McDonald Avenue and Mill Street. It's located on tax parcel oh five, one one two oh five nine, and north of tax parcel oh five, one one two oh four six. To orient you to the site, you have North Providence running north and south, Howie Mine running east and west. The petition is to abandon the right-of-way along the hatched areas of this map, which includes a portion of Mill Street, and then east-west, you have a portion of McDonald Avenue. These are both unopened, unimproved rights-of-way, meaning the town nor N C D O T has accepted them for maintenance, nor have they improved with a road itself. Typically, when you abandon right-of-way, you split the property down the middle, um, the adjacent property owners would get half of the land. In this case, Mr. Kelly owns all four of these properties. In the past, we talked about there not being any north boundary right-of-way line, so this plat does indicate that a right-of-way, it's one foot south of the fence line, and then dedicates two portions of property right here and here. It's about thirteen hundred and twenty-seven square feet. If this property were to ever develop, we would require the full sixty-foot right-of-way and then any other internal streets to access the property. State statute one sixty-eight, two ninety-nine allows us to abandon that right-of-way. We've already published the newspaper for, for four consecutive weeks, the resolution of intent. We've sent out notices to adjacent property owners. We've posted two signs on the property. Tonight is the public hearing. There will be no decision tonight. When you do make that decision, you're basing it off the closing not being contrary to the public interest, and that no individual owning property in the vicinity being deprived of reasonable means of ingress and egress to his property. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and Mr. Ruli is also here, if you have any questions.
Very good. Any questions for our presenter? Have one quick one. Are we, um, at a point, or have we had discussion about the north side of that ownership?
That, there is a current sixty-foot Price Avenue. There's a current sixty-foot right-of-way. It's unopened. Um, currently, the driveway is, it sits on that right-of-way.
Okay. All right. All right, any other further questions, discussion? All right, none, so I'm going to call up the first person who's signed up to speak on this, so we'll call up Mr. Edwin Elam.
To Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, to the Commissioners, Town Clerk, Town Manager, Town Attorney, to all of the persons who are present here, and above all, each and every citizen who is here and those who are watching. The scales of history must be balanced with the weight of truth whenever we find an injustice that requires the remedy of government of the people, by the people, and for the people. On this zoning, the community injured reports that this mess was caused by an individual who intentionally closed this lane to keep, quote, "those people of that day from their travels," and the landowner, um, uh, did own the property on the east side and west side of this public right-of-way. At a time when our town Waxaw had the gall and intentional denial for, for black soldiers coming from World War Two, wanting equal rights to water and sewer, they were denied. This was the backdrop for this kind of behavior. Until this citizen spoke up and brought this injustice to a head, which now had, that challenge has been solved, uh, by the county solving it with the, uh, the information that has been solved through the water, through a natural gravity flow. The injustice withstood these public lives and the administration of this dais in two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and nineteen had a Jim Crow mentality and was corrected eighty-two years of stinking thinking by bringing this to the town's attention. Just a few years ago, I asked the question of this dais, which was led by a different mayor, why do they hate us so? They lied on the record, and now we know the truth. As I take my seat, I want to stand here flat-footed and support the transfer of this, but not without bringing attention to the black property owner that this may impact because of the way this, uh, waterway was dug, uh, over the weekend by bringing, uh, in heavy equipment against the town policy, and how all of that began created a water flow that could damage the property on Price Street at three oh one. And of course, there's a culture of persons who live here who don't know how to fight, who don't know how to bring their grievance to the government, and do, who do not know that they have the right to speak at an event like this. So this injustice that we want to bring that to your attention as you deliberate on this, that you make sure that when this does transfer, and again, I go on record supporting it, but we also want you to know that you have a responsibility because of how this was done, the tenor in which it was done, and the people who it will hurt, and at least one property owner, who might not know how to reclaim the land that this actually impacted. And whatever transferred to, transfers to this individual, we're asking that whatever legal items need to be done to protect that individual, so that they do not bear an unbearable cost later for something that they didn't understand and know how to do, and I know that this board feels that way as well.
Very good.
We are not having this behavior here. We cannot change the past, but we are not standing for this behavior in the future. This is the way that we protect all people, red, yellow, black, and white, the same. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Mr. William Rutledge. Ruli, I'm sorry.
I'm just here for questions. Answer questions.
Okay, um.
Any questions that you have?
Yes, it's public comment.
Public comment is all it is?
Yeah.
Well, I'm going to spare you my Indian history.
Okay, all right, great, thank you, appreciate that. All right, um, I think we're done with that, so we will move on to the next item. It's a public hearing on conditional rezoning petition. Close it all I want. So Madison, you're up.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Evening.
Oh, yeah, good evening. Uh, I am here before you for the conditional rezoning petition for a development we are calling Cottage Park. This petition is a request by the applicant Broad Street Homes for a conditional rezoning on approximately forty-four point five one acres. This property is located at the intersection of Waxaw Marvin Road and Helms Road. This mixed-use development will contain thirty-three thousand square feet of retail, seventy-nine attached residential units or townhomes, twenty-eight live-work units, and a hundred and eighteen cottage units. So all of the uses are permitted within the N C zoning district. However, the cottage-style subdivision does require the conditional rezoning. This is an aerial of the property. As you can see, it's situated right there at the corner of Waxaw Marvin and Helms Road. For the current zoning, it is currently zoned neighborhood center, uh, along with the parcels to the north, the east, and the west, and located to the south is the C S X right-of-way, and then below that is Highway seventy-five. So our future land use plan, our land use plan map that was updated in two thousand and twenty-one designates this property as mixed-use, as it is currently zoned, but our Waxaw twenty sixteen comprehensive plan bridge document, uh, designates this area as G three intended growth with the residential designation. So this designation allows for a mixture of housing types from detached single-family, townhomes, cottages, duplexes, uh, but then also for planned developments, it calls for a, a number of neighborhood commercial uses. So this is the proposed site plan, so the orientation is a little different. So off to the bottom of your screen, to the bottom right would be north, and then this is east, and then south. is east, and then south and west. So you can see, kind of situated at the corner of the site is all the commercial and retail space. Tucked in behind that are your live-work units. So these are retail on the bottom with an apartment unit above it. And then as you transition farther into the site, these are your townhomes. And then at the back of the site are your cottages. So they'll have an access point on Waxall Marvin Road and one on Helms Road as well. So the TIA, or our Traffic Impact Analysis, they met the threshold for the analysis, and these are the required mitigations for that. So at the intersection of Waxall Marvin and Pine Oak, they will be required to install a westbound left-turn lane, so a left-turn lane from Pine Oak onto Waxall Marvin. At their access one, which is on Waxall Marvin Road, it'll be a single egress and a single ingress. And then they will install a concrete island to pretty much make that access a right-in, a right-out only. And this is due to its close proximity to the future roundabout project or the Torrey Path-Helms Road rail crossing project. And then their second access point, which is on Helms Road, or what they're calling here Waxall, future Waxall Parkway, they will have a southbound left-turn lane into the site, and then a northbound right-turn lane into the site. And of course, a single ingress and a single egress lane for this access. So for recreation open space, the LDC requires squares, parks, and other forms of usable open space. And so this development is proposing six-point-eight acres of open space. And these are scattered throughout the development in what they are calling pods, or their cottage areas. So there are open spaces to where the cottage is front onto them. And so these areas will consist of seating areas, elevated hardscapes, landscaping, trees, firepits, community gardens. And then with this, they're providing connectivity throughout, through each pod. And then this amenity, or this development, will be providing a clubhouse and an amenity area with a pool and sports courts. So for landscaping and tree preservation, the proposed development is providing three-point-one acres of tree save. And within the tree save, they have located and are preserving all of their heritage trees on site. So the applicant and staff walked the site, located all the heritage trees, and they're making them a part of the amenity. So there will be five heritage trees preserved within the site. And then our land development code also calls for front yard area planting, so this is along your frontages of Waxall Marvin and Helms Road, so they'll be required to put additional plantings there for trees. So these are the elevations for the various product types. You can see the cottages and then the townhome units there in the center and on the bottom right. So they're using cemented siding in the forms of board and batten, lap siding. And then they're taking into account cottage design styles, so the columns, the entryways, the windows, the doors. And so these are kind of provided throughout each product type. So the planning board recommendation, the planning board reviewed the conditional zoning site plan on November fifteenth, and the planning board gave a unanimous recommendation on the approval and the consistency statement. So the following conditions that they recommended, items one through four were staff-recommended, and then upon the recommendation of the planning board, they added item number five. So item number one, they shall follow the cottage home design standards, which are in our LDC, with the exception of item D, which allows the cottage homes to reach a height of thirty-five feet instead of twenty-five feet. They, the twenty-five buffer around the development shall be waived as they began the site design for this prior to our Neighborhood Center text amendment update, which you guys saw a few months back. They are requesting an exception to the block length requirement, so this is really to accommodate the cottage design because a lot of them are alley-fed rather than a public street. And then the parkland dedication or fee-in lieu, which you guys saw the text amendment for that a few months back as well, they are asking that that be located or paid for within the Phase Two, which will be their second project across the street on Helms Road. And then in discussions with the planning board and then with the applicant, they, the planning board requested that they work with the town and NC DOT to ensure that there's a fifty-foot right-of-way from the center line to ensure the future needs of the Waxall Parkway. And then the applicant has agreed to these conditions. And so this is gonna be your requested action for December thirteenth, and since I am the last public hearing, tonight's motion will be to close the public hearings. And then the consistency statement. So I am available for any and all questions. Our traffic consultant, Brady, is here with Kim Lee Horn. And then I will say the applicant will also be giving a brief presentation on the project and conditional rezoning. So if there are any immediate questions, I'm here to answer. If not, I will ask our IT department to bring up the applicant's presentation at this time.
All right, any questions before we move to the next step? The person signed up to speak was the applicant, representative of the applicant, so we can, if there's no questions at this time, anybody? Okay, let's go ahead and move on to the next part.
Yeah. So this is Paul Pennell, but he will do, I'm sure, an introduction of himself.
Thank you. Welcome.
This will move it to the next slide. And then this is the...
A lot of reference material. Yeah, you gotta be prepared.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Commissioners. My name is Paul Pennell with Urban Design Partners, representing Brian Ignema with Broad Street Homes, along with Chris Hansen with Impact Development. And I have the pleasure of speaking to you tonight on Cottage Park, which, well, I guess about a year and a half ago, we started working on a quite interesting layout, and it has been a pleasure working on this project for quite some time. Before I jump into the presentation, I would also like to thank Madison and Blair, town staff, on all of the direction and all the guidance and help that they have provided on this petition. It has been a real pleasure working on this project, and I think hopefully we have arrived at something pretty special for the community. So I'd like to start with just a brief image here of the location of the site at Helms Road and, hold on, let me get my notes out here. Let me, I'm a little discombobulated after talking about the project leading up to it. Helms Road and Waxall Marvin Road, this is as it stands today. Most of it's farmland. A lot of it is also treed. Just to provide some context, I'm sure you all have driven through here before, and this is what it looks like today. Madison in his presentation had provided some context as to the locations, approximately third, just under thirty acres for this particular site at the corner of Helms and Waxall Marvin. On this slide, we have actually taken the existing aerial photograph at this location and overlaid the current NC DOT road improvements that are forthcoming. I believe these improvements have recently just officially started, just, I think officially, the groundbreaking was maybe a month or two ago. So these improvements are commencing and moving forward, which is, which is great for the town. Wanted to provide just a little bit of context here if any questions came up. Luckily, Madison is here to ask any, or answer any specific questions regarding the Neighborhood Center District, but at least wanted to provide a little bit of context to the existing zoning for the site today. All right, so why? Why are we doing this? Why is this project such an exciting project? Well, this project, contextually and from a design standpoint, is quite different than the traditional neighborhood that we are all so familiar with. We are referring to this, at least the cottage portion and the townhome portion of this, as a pocket neighborhood. So the neighborhood itself provides a mix of uses on site, including retail, commercial, I believe it's just under thirty-four thousand square feet of commercial and retail uses, live-work units, townhomes, all of that we're all familiar with. The cottage homes, yes, we're familiar with those, but the traditional neighborhood that we're all so familiar with, you pull into a neighborhood, you're on a public street, you pull off the public street onto a driveway, you park your car, you pull into the garage, the home is fronting on a public street. Here, that's not the case. All of the homes are rear and alley-fed. Well, I take that back, it's not all of them. There's maybe four of them that actually have a driveway on a public street. But they are turned and oriented, so the front of the home is actually fronting on a public park. This is a pocket neighborhood. Pocket neighborhoods are typically smaller in size, eight homes, maybe upwards of sixteen homes, which contextually, that's not what this is. However, in working with Brian and Brian's team, we figured out a way to do individual smaller pocket neighborhoods throughout the entire development. So there are some contextual things and some design elements that we can talk a little bit about as we get into the presentation. But before that, let's go ahead and jump to the rezoning slide here. Madison had covered this. We just wanted this in the presentation for reference purposes. Let's jump to the rendered site plan that will help provide a little bit more visual representation of what's happening here. So this is the retail center, approximately just under thirty-four thousand square feet of commercial and retail spaces. You've got the live-work, so it'll be ground floor, commercial, retail, office uses with residential units above. As you move away from the intersection and the commercial use, you move back into the townhomes. These townhomes are still oriented on public park space. So these will be neighborhood gardens, just like the cottage homes in the back. And then you step into the cottage community, the single-family detached residential uses. These are smaller-scale homes. They're meant to be, at least accommodate a, folks that don't want to live in a large house, and maybe folks that don't want to live in an apartment either. They want something kind of in the middle, that missing middle kind of, that concept. They, they want to be included in a community feel, but they still, they still want that single-family home to be here. They still want to enjoy that. The other wonderful component of this pocket neighborhood concept is everything is interconnected with sidewalks. So you can walk right out your front door, which won't take you to a public road, it will take you to a park right in front of your house. You can see your neighbors, enjoy that camaraderie with your neighbors. And then you can walk along a sidewalk through multiple other pocket parks within the community as you go to grab a glass of wine in the, in the commercial area. So it's really meant to be a neighborhood where you arrive with your car. If you live in the community, you park your car, and hopefully over a weekend, you don't have to go anywhere else. You can just enjoy the outdoors, enjoy nature, enjoy getting to know your neighbors, go grab a bite to eat, maybe grab a cup of coffee in the morning, and you just get to relax. It's a different style of living, and this is something that we're quite excited to design and bring to the community. So let's talk amenities. Other than all of the amenity spaces that all of the detached homes and the townhomes will be fronting on, there are other programmed amenity spaces. So each community will have its own programmed amenity space. It could be a community garden, fire pits, maybe a patio area for sipping wine with your neighbors, dog parks. But there is a, a formal amenity space with a pool, sports courts, and other programmatic elements. So there, there is gonna be a more traditional amenity space here for, for the community to enjoy. The commercial and retail area, we envision this as being a space that will have restaurants and outdoor patio space, so it won't be just indoor space. Maybe some community events could occur here, small live music events, and then just general areas for the community and residents to gather here. And then we have the pocket parks themselves. So each one of these has been uniquely designed in a way that has really taken into account existing topography on site, existing trees. Madison had touched on the heritage trees. Madison, Blair, and Chris and I, it was a lot hotter than, you know, it was pretty warm out. We went tromping around the woods and identified all the heritage trees out on site. Your number is right, I think there's five that we're gonna have. There was one that we found out that is, we weren't saying, like, we didn't want to stand under it, it needs to come down. We were keeping our distance. But each pocket park was designed in a way that is unique based on the existing topography. So the idea here is that, you know, we are going to be able to lay these homes out in a way that is gonna minimize grading, minimize site impact. And when you look at it, the layout's very organic, and it's very intentional. If you, if you looked at the layout and overlaid it with the topography and the trees on site, it would suddenly make perfect sense as to why the site has been laid out in the manner that it's been, that it's been laid out. So architecture, one of the big components and important design aesthetics for a pocket community is building that sense of, of community with your neighbors. However, you're living in close proximity. You, you have this opportunity to walk right by your neighbor's house and say hi, but all of the homes have these usable porches that are elevated above the adjacent sidewalk. So that is a very large component for, for this community. It's gonna be sitting out on your front porch, enjoying your cup of coffee in the morning, maybe wine or beer in the afternoon. Your neighbor walks by while they're walking their dog, you get to say hi, but it's not encroaching on your private space because you've got a nice private patio that's elevated, and it provides that sense of boundary between you, you have your private home, and, and your neighbors, but it still allows you that opportunity to get to know those in the community. The townhomes, all uniquely designed, they too will also have patio spaces. There will be articulation between the units, so it'll be clear and apparent that they are individual units. It won't be a kind of a monolithic townhome design. This is a two-D rendering, but, but that building articulation between the units will be there, and that cottage feel will still be apparent in the architecture. Now during our community meeting, we presented some image boards, basically wanting to identify what was most important to those that attended our community meeting. Interesting enough, the trail connectivity and also dining opportunities were the most important to the community. We identified this by providing stickers that everyone could go through and put a sticker on the pictures that mattered to them the most, and those were the two that, that came back as the most important. Good thing is, you know, from a multi-modal standpoint, there's a lot of opportunity to, to be a pedestrian and walk here. We have, through working with Waxall, kept the public roads to a minimum. The alleys have been designed in a way that they are narrow and intentionally narrow to slow cars as they drive through the community. And then also providing people just the maximum opportunity to, to jump on a sidewalk, maybe jump on their bike, and, and walk or ride to where they want to go. So with that, that's the presentation. Again, thank you so much for the opportunity to, to talk about this design and talk about this petition. We're certainly excited, and I'll make myself available to any questions that you all may have. Thank you.
Any questions, Ron? This is a great presentation. I liked the concept. So any questions, comments, anybody? Mr. Hall.
The only comment I have, the only comment I have is that your engagement and participation with the community and with the neighbors surrounding the projects that you do is really remarkable. It's definitely noticed. The fact that you've made changes based on feedback from the community is, is really appreciated. So thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions around the board?
I'm looking forward to the project coming forward. It's a lot of work, and, you know, I too will echo the sentiment, not only does our town staff provide a lot of input for you guys, but you guys come to the table as well and work through any issues, problems, or even thoughts that they have to make the project a good project for our town, our community. So I want to say from my standpoint, I appreciate that, and I hope that it works out the way you intended it to.
Thank you, Mayor. All right. Any other comments, thoughts? Okay, with this, it's in that we will then ask no more questions, and we can close this portion of it, of the public hearing. So can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearings.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All the way around. Great. Thank you, Madison. Appreciate that. All right, next up, no old business tonight, new business. And we have the police organizational and pay study. I think we're gearing up to have a presenter online. And Jeff, I'll let you walk through some of this with that part of it, so you can tee him up for us.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it, and looks like he is, at the moment, not in front of the screen, so hopefully that will change momentarily. I appreciate it, and looks like he is, at the moment, not in front of the screen, so hopefully that will change momentarily. But, um, David, there he is.
There now.
David Hill is, uh, he is an employee of the Piedmont Triad Regional Council, and he has been our consultant through this, uh, process for the police organizational and pay study. And he has a, uh, short PowerPoint presentation that he would like to, uh, go through to give you the hot points of the results of the study. And then I also have a few slides at the end with some recommendations on moving forward. And we'll have, uh, Wendy as well, um, chime in for a moment or two about the classification and pay plan structure. And so with that, I will go ahead and, uh, proceed over to David.
Thank you, Jeff. Uh, can you see my pillow?
Not yet. Not yet.
Put it down at the bottom there, I can't. So, if we can, uh, if it makes it better, if we can take us off the screen, give you some more space. There you go. We can.
Uh, uh, thank you very much for, uh, having me here this evening. Um, we spent, um, a long time, it was like the other, uh, it was totally on the ground, the question to the computer. I just spent, uh, several hours doing, um, uh, analysis and evaluation of the police department. We did, we, uh, we, uh, we worked with the, uh, specifically the retail organization. Uh, by those reports, uh, it was fine, we, uh, we quickly go through, we like to, uh, begin, uh, not, uh, the question we have. But the, uh, primary purpose of the study was to develop market compared to pay analysis. And we did manage, uh, that's what we see though, so, uh, we, uh, we can also spend a simple amount of time
I'm sorry, the town of Matthews. They, they have a pretty robust criminal analyst division over there. And without telling them where I was using this information, I showed them this information and they confirmed that the, the ranking that you're looking at in these slides is correct. And of course, to create out, looking at violent crimes, then in the next slide, property crimes, Waxahaw is in the most enviable, enviable, position of all of these local departments. And then you are, depending on which way you look at it, you are first. Or you are the lowest. And then the, in the property crime, you're, you're next to lowest. So just looking at those two areas of violent crime rate and property crime rate, the town of Waxahaw is in a pretty enviable position. So that was a very quick run through and as said, each of you have my reports detailing specific information into those areas. And certainly I'd be glad to answer any questions that any of you have.
I think at this point, I want to pause a little bit and then let you go with your slide.
Yes, okay, thank you very much. Well, David, I might have to ask you to advance the slide now that I think about it, since you're in, in control there. Do you mind doing that?
Okay, can you see that?
I can see that, thank you, thank you very much. So greatly appreciate that presentation. And based on the results of the study, this is my recommendation for how we move forward. Number one is increase the police department salaries consistent with the study results. What that means is, is from the lieutenant positions down to the administrative positions, that would be adding five percent to their existing salaries. Update the town of Waxahaw classification and pay plan. So that would update the police position pay grades consistent with the study. And I'll have Wendy go over that momentarily as well. Also momentarily, I'll go over the budget amendment to account for the increase in police salary and benefits. That would cover salaries, social security, the supplemental 401K, and NC retirement, and as well as requesting in addition to their overtime budget, which is already running a little, a little large at this point of the year. We also are taking liberty during this time to go ahead with the classification and pay plan to update some other positions on that. That would include adding a range for the position of planner two. And it would add development services engineer as well as assistant town engineer to the, to the pay plan. And so with that, I will ask Wendy first before I go over the budget, budget amendment to go over the pay and classification plan. I'm sorry, we do not have that on the screen. It is really hard to see an environment like this because of just the way it's put together. But you know, you have it in your packet, and so Wendy can, can go over it with you.
Wendy, you're up.
Good evening. It's pretty self-explanatory as I color-coded it. So we updated all the positions, the police law enforcement positions and the administrative staff. There are about one grade as recommended. And those that have kind of morphed during the year with the title change or in the three positions that Jeff just mentioned, we also included those. So you'd be aware of those and be completely up to date. So if you have any questions about it, I can answer them. I'll try to do that for you. That's about it.
All right, well, there's been a lot of work and a lot of input that we've had here tonight as well. And I want to, at least from this standpoint, commend all the people who have inputted to the entire process. We've been working on this collectively as a group for what, almost two years? And I think that we've come to a lot of conclusions on this. But I want to open it up now to any thoughts and questions and comments by the board. And if we can, Jeff, if we have to go back and forth to some of David's slides, any questions that might be to Wendy and/or yourself. So I'm going to open it up. Any thoughts, comments, and questions? Oh, they're going to love you. No thoughts, comments, and questions all the way around? All right.
I'll go over the budget amendment then. So as you see on the screen here, the request is-
Hang on, Jeff, I'm-
Oh, okay.
I'm not sure if this would be more for you or maybe David. And I know when we, we started this, we wanted to definitely, we knew one of the issues that we had was the retention of our officers. And that I know pay is just one piece of that. But was there any sort of information that came out of the study that why our officers liked to work here, or this is a good place to work, or anything that we can do to retain that investment that we make in hiring our new officers? I just didn't know if there was something else uncovered, or was pay like the end-all, be-all? Or I just know my experience in the private sector is pay is just one piece of that. And I didn't know if there was any sort of theming that was identified.
David, I'll let you handle that one.
Jeff, I may have to get you to repeat the question I was having, Jeff. My sound is not really good.
I guess the question that I had, was there any themes that had been identified in addition to pay as of, of retention? Because I know we kind of also went into this study as a way of retaining our employees and our return on investment when we hire a new employee. So was there any themes that were identified of why our officers like to work here? Or, or what the exit interviews might have shown of why they were leaving?
You're asking, did any additional themes appear?
Yes, like did, was, was this a good environment? Did we have the right advancement tools in place? Was it a right environment for them to thrive and grow in? Was there other, other recommendations that could be done in addition to pay that would help retain our officers?
Probably the, the theme that came out was there, the department does have tools in place for advancement or recruitment. There, in the opinion of most employees, there was some inconsistencies in the administration of those tools. But primarily, when it comes to recruitment and retention, the, the theme that was prevalent to me was more generational. The, the younger, the younger officers were looking for opportunities. And that's where, in the, in the slides and our report, they talked about shift differentials and permanent shift assignments. They, they were more interested in more of a, a family and work balance workplace. More, more freedom, more personal expression, even though we're in a paramilitary organization that may be difficult to achieve. But a lot of the younger officers were looking for that, that opportunity to be successful, but at the same time having some personal freedoms. And a lot of that fell in the area of facial hair and tattoos and some of those. Kinds of personal choice areas. But there, there, there was a lot of discussion about compensation for, like, being bilingual. And a lot of discussion from the employees about the achievement, their, their advancement within the law enforcement community when they achieve their intermediate certification and their advanced certification. That there should be some greater recognition of that. And in the promotional tools that the department has in place, and, and those are very similar to most departments across the state. So the tool that the department has is pretty consistent with most other departments. But there's quite a bit of emphasis on educational degrees. And a lot of discussion from employees was regarding the, the equivalency of intermediate law enforcement certification to an associate's degree. And an equivalency of an advanced law enforcement certification to a bachelor's degree. So their, their concern was that, that a lot of them were limited in promotional opportunities because they did not have that educational degree. But they, they had internal training, they had opportunities for, the state has some very defined criteria to achieve that intermediate and advanced certification. And a lot of that is not classroom work, even though there is some. But the equivalency of that was a theme throughout. That there, there should be some equivalency to those intermediate and advanced certifications to an associate's and a bachelor's degree. Or, or at least have one or the other. Not, not that they specifically have to have an associate's or a bachelor's degree, but an intermediate or advanced certification could be substituted.
Great, so what I, it sounds like something that you said, that we have the appropriate tools in place, is just maybe the execution or the implementation of those could be improved upon? From what would has been before? Is that kind of-
Does the town and the department have the tools in place?
Right, so we have the necessary tools and structure in place. We just, it just needs to be implemented or promoted, I guess.
There just needs to be some modification. Again, I'm just repeating what employees expressed to me. There needs to be some modification of those requirements to be eligible for promotional opportunities.
May I comment on that? So we have already started down that road and are making changes already, especially with Chief Collins being here. And today we met Jeff, myself, Chief Collins, and the training, training sergeant met to discuss the CDP and update it and make it more doable for our officers and doable for the town. So we're, we're looking at shift differentials. They're, they're talking about all the things that he has listed. So we have definitely jumped on this and are trying to, to, to get that accomplished.
It sounds like a better work-life balance too, that will help with the retention. I just wasn't sure if there's any sort of themes or things that you might have heard from exit interviews of why, why we weren't retaining or some of our officers, but-
I think that David mentioned most of it. I think that, you know, you can stay somewhere a long time, but the culture can drive you away as well. And I think that all of this is going to contribute to that and to a positive culture. And it's, it's going very well.
All right, any questions? Any more presentation done from you guys?
Yes, go. So just to go over the budget amendment with you. So the proposal is to draw from general fund, unassigned fund balance in the amount of $100,000. And so how that would be distributed into several line items, into the salaries, overtime, social security, 401K, and NC state retirement. The overtime is $15,000. And that's to help cover some additional needs there as we're running high on that budget line item this year. Then of course, the other line items cover the proposed salary increase for all police employees. So David, if you wouldn't mind advancing the slide one more? Thank you. So your recommended motions, you have three this evening. Is motion to authorize administration to increase police department salaries consistent with the study results effective December 1st, 2022. Motion to update the town of Waxahaw classification and pay plan. And then lastly, motion to approve budget amendment in the amount of $100,000 to transfer from fund balance to cover salaries and benefits associated with the police organizational and pay study.
No questions.
Okay, very, very good. All right, a couple of questions, comments, I'm going to go with Mayor Portem first.
In your budget proposal as to the $100,000 and what you're increasing and asking for, in a lot of departments, I don't know if you do it here, those who do work night shift, they get a night differential, is that considered or in this budget with?
It is not part of this, but that is part of some of the other results of this study that we will plan to bring forward in the near future.
The night differential?
Yes. I think that's a, a simple and really not very costly thing to do.
Commissioner Simpson?
My question is, is the, I just want to make sure I understand. So the amount of the $100,000 is coming from our fund balance, our savings account per se, to make up for the rest, the remainder of this year's budget, fiscal budget?
That's correct.
And then next year, we'll, I'm sure we'll budget that in with the other recommendations in terms of shift differentials and things when you present the budget to us in the spring, correct?
That's correct. We'll have to carry this forever.
Okay.
Essentially, this number is to carry us through the remainder of the budget year.
Yes, that's correct.
Do we have any idea how long or how much will be projected for next year's budget?
As far as total revenues, I think next year you will see the typical increase that we've had in the last several years. So it'll probably be several hundred thousand increase in tax base. We've done really well with sales tax, so that should be up. Where we're going to have a deficiency is going to be in building inspections, permitting and inspections. I think this next year we'll have an increase in tax base and be fine. But as the sewer situation has started to come about and all of the permitted houses that we have are finishing up, then a couple of years beyond that, we right now will not have the tax base growth that we will have this upcoming year. And maybe if something changes very quickly.
I, I was just asking with regard to the amount for the police, not-
Right.
Oh, okay, well, I was getting big picture there.
You were getting big picture. I think what we're maybe referring to, if I can round up on that as well, we're looking for the consideration in the future of what we think might be the additional amount going forward in our budget year. Is that kind of where you're leaning?
I see, ye- yes, so $100,000 will, our tax base will definitely increase enough to cover that.
I think as we talked in this one discussion, Commissioner Hall did an independent study on his own. I think at one time we were talking about the $240,000 number. But obviously giving all the conditions that we now want to meet. And it is important for us to have those conditions be met to achieve our goals. I think the expectation in our head should be somewhere north of 450 for an annual increase in our budget request, which as I'm hearing, we will have the revenue coming in to be able to cover that. Or we're definitely flexible enough to make any adjustments in any other expenses that we want to do. So I guess the question, the answer is, we'll have the money.
I just wanted also note that this undertaking, the, the study and what we've done so far, it, it wasn't an easy task and it certainly had to be done so that we can be well-suited, well-prepared to make these decisions without just going on ahead without all the facts. So I want to thank everybody who, who had their input and, and their thoughts. And as we move forward, it's, I think it's a great thing that we've been able to accomplish. And I'm glad we've taken the time to get our, all our facts and, and supporting documentation so that next year and the following years, we can make even better prepared decisions.
I would agree. All right, any other thoughts, comments along the way? All right, so are you ready?
Charlie, how, would you want them to make three separate motions?
Yes, that's where I was heading. Commissioner Hall. Well, you want to do that already, you want to just jump right in there, huh? All right, so we're going to go, we've got three separate motions, as the town manager said. So who's going to make the first motion, please?
Mr. Mayor, I'll present the motion to authorize the administration to increase police department salaries and benefits consistent with the study results effective December 1st, 2022.
Very good, thank you. Any other further discussion? If not, then, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, great. Second motion, who's up?
Motion to update the town of Waxahaw's classification and pay plan.
Good, that motion is up. All in favor?
Aye.
All the way around, unanimous again. There's about a thousand, we're going to Vegas so far, so. All right, third motion.
Motion to approve budget amendment in the amount of $100,000 to transfer from fund balance to cover salaries and benefits associated with the police organizational and pay study.
Thank you, Mayor Portem, that motion is up, all in favor?
Aye.
All the way around, we're good. Congratulations, everybody. And again, thank you for all the team. We've all had input on this for a very, very long period of time. And to Commissioner Morey's point, we wanted to make sure we had all the data, all the information to the best of our abilities to achieve this. So we're working on it, guys. So I think, I think you've got a great team working for you. So, and thank you for all that you guys do for us. Appreciate it, really is. All right, thank you, Wendy. All right. Three and one, I like it. David, thank you very much for your input and help along the way as well. I know we've had a lot of Zoom conversations about this in growing this. And thanks for being patient with all of our questions from all of our staff and all of our commissioners. So I want to say thank you for that help and input.
Thank you very much, thank you.
All right, so we have another item up, number two on, on this agenda here. We have Lisa Thompson coming back up to talk to us. This is the initiation of a voluntary annexation petition, so it's up to you.
Thank you. In a moment. All right. A request has been submitted by the applicant, Tim Samuels, with BRD Land and Investment LP. It's for the annexation of 242.28 acres. Property is combined of eight parcels. It's located off Highway 75, west of Hermitage Place subdivision. To orient you to the site, the subject property is outlined in red. You have Highway 75 to the north, then Old Waxahaw Monroe Road to the west. And then to the bottom left of the screen, you have the eight parcels that we're looking at for annexation. The interesting point is this is not a property line, but this is an old annexation line, making the Rogers property contiguous to the old Pittinger track. So they made that connection there at the time of the Pittinger, Pittinger annexation. 160A-33 is the process given to us by the state tonight. We're doing steps one through three. We are approving the resolution of intent. We're going to have the clerk certify that the application is sufficient. And then we're calling for a public hearing to be held December 13th. At that time, we'll have that public hearing and then the, the decision in January. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, this one's been up before us before in dialogue, long dialogue before. But any questions for Ms. Lisa? All right, so with that, seeing none, hearing none, so looking for a motion on the first part. Who wants to make that motion?
Motion to approve resolution 2022021 directing the town clerk to investigate annexation petition 18-229.
All right, very good, a motion is up, all in favor?
Aye.
All the way around. Town clerk? Comment? Great, thank you, appreciate that. All right, second motion on this-
Motion to approve resolution 2022022, scheduling the public hearing for December 13th, 2022 at 6:30 PM in the police department community room.
Very good. Motion is up on this one too, all in favor?
Aye.
All the way around, we're good. Congratulations, we'll look forward to December 13th, public hearing on that. Great, thank you. You guys are in competition with my carpool board lately, so this is good. All right, so now next up, Madison, I think you're back up. This is on the first reading of changes to the town ordinances, so floor is yours.
Good evening again. So this is a request by the code enforcement department to amend section 46-5. This is our loud, disturbing, and unnecessary noises, or just our noise ordinance. And staff recommendation, so code enforcement staff in partnership with the downtown director recommends updating the current noise ordinance to reduce the time allowed for the use of any radio, loudspeaker instrument, or any sound amplifying device at the 65 decibel level. So the current time for the 65 decibel level is from 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM. Our requested action is to change it to end at 10:00 PM. And so the requested action for tonight is going to be feedback. So we'll actually do a second reading at the December 13th meeting because there are possibly criminal penalties associated with this section overall. So that requires us to do a second reading, so you'll get to see me again. And if there's any discussion, I'm here for questions.
All right, any questions? Question I have real quick, Charlie maybe on this. So are we looking to do this adoption tonight? Or do we have to wait for the second reading? At the second reading, okay, that was my question, okay. So now this again looks to be informational, so from this standpoint. So any questions by the board members?
Madison, this, so this ordinance would be for the town as a whole, not just the downtown area? Is that right?
That is correct.
Any other questions? All right, we'll shake you loose again.
Awesome.
Thank you very much. All right, next up is the reappointment of the Waxahaw town attorney contract. So Jeff, you're up.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So Mr. Buckley has been serving as town attorney for Waxahaw since May 2018. His contract runs on a yearly basis and is due for renewal. The contract would be effective December 1st, 2022 through November 30th, 2023. Mr. Buckley attends all regular board of commissioner meetings and planning board meetings. He also provides advice on an almost daily basis to a number of town employees. His retainer and hourly rate are budgeted in the town's administration budget. And staff recommends approval of the contract. Thank you.
All right, very good. So let's, let's open this up for any discussion. Obviously, we had some thought about that, so. Anybody want to speak to it?
My recommendation was to table it so that I could speak with Mr. Buckley, but-
Okay, well, we're here tonight to, to take action on it tonight. So I'll look for, if there's no other further comment on it, then I'm going to look for a motion.
Motion to approve attorney-client representation agreement December 1st, 2022 to November 30th, 2023.
All right, very good. All right, so the motion is up, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
For the record. All right, 4-1. Welcome back, Charlie. I don't know if I was real comfortable with that gap, so.
Still shorter than Matthew's meetings, right?
All right, town leadership reports. Going to drop over to our town manager again.
Well, I had two bullet points, but I have a feeling that Todd will probably want to update on one of them. So I'll only do this one, and it's an update on our town campus project. You've probably driven by there at some point in the last week or so. And if you've driven by there in the last day or so, you will see that the site area is completely cleared of the trees for where our, our buildings, parking area will be. So you can begin to visualize how that site will look moving forward. Now, they're still working, of course, on clearing out the stumps. And we'll be doing that for a little bit. And they'll start to install the erosion control measures next week. So we are moving along.
It's exciting.
Yes. And so considering my voice, probably all I should probably talk about anyway. So appreciate the, the time this evening.
All right, very good. Did Todd, did you want to jump in on, piggyback on anything he's got to say? No, he was just baiting you, is what he's doing.
Oh, well, no, I, I'm sorry. I thought Todd was on the leadership, my apologies. So I guess I will talk about then. Sunbonnet Lane. Sunbonnet Lane is, it, it looks like it's just about complete. So I'm going to go fully check it out tomorrow, but it is looking really, really good. That project, even though it was an administrative nightmare, but Todd, Lisa, engineering staff, all just did an awesome job. all just did an awesome job getting through that. That's a small project, but that's one that really makes me smile.
That's really good, and it's good.
Very proud of that one.
I think it's good to have. Go ahead.
Matt needs to take the drone out, get some aerials for us.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Well, Matt's probably listening in there, so we'll do that.
That's great, that's awesome. All right, appreciate that. I'm going to move next to Police Chief, Greg, welcome. First is your new role, literally.
Hello again. I just want to start with saying, on behalf of all the officers and administrative staff, thank you. Five percent, it's not a huge amount of money, but it's a very visible amount to the officers that you hear what they're saying and their concerns are. I read something yesterday, and I think I mentioned it this morning in a meeting, that pay isn't for officers, pays for families, and so I think they all realize that, and to Commissioner Simpson's point earlier, I believe it was, that pay is just part of the puzzle. It's a chunk of the puzzle, but we are actively working on a lot of the other pieces, so I'll just forget some of the stuff I was going to say and just bring it up. This piece of it, we wanted to address as quickly as possible, and again, thank you for moving on it so that it goes into effect December 1st, before Christmas. Some of the other parts, the career development plan, that's going to be a budget item for July, so you'll be seeing me again, of course, and we'll be talking about it, but with Wendy's help, and Jeff, and everybody else, we want to present the most robust plan we can that really gives officers and sergeants and lieutenants a clear pathway to more responsibility and what comes with that, generally is more pay. So the pay is there on paper, once it's blessed, to retain some of the people that have been lost in the past. Shift differential, again, we would make that part of the budget for July, but what we are doing in the meantime, in January, we'll, two weeks ago, I'll back up, two weeks ago, we did a little informal survey and asked who would be interested in permanent shifts, just for patrol, because that's all it's going to affect. We had a very strong response, and 82 or 85% of those people want to at least try it. So in January, we're going to try it for two rotations. Typically, what they do is change shifts, day to night, every 28 days, so we're going to do 56 days solid. Somewhere in there, we'll start asking the question about what do you all think, and how's it working out? I'll say too, that most of the people that might regret saying this, said they'd be interested in doing it without the shift differential, but I do think that can make it more attractive to maybe keep some experience on night shift that we wouldn't have. We're also looking at call for service demands and blocks of four hours to look at staggering some of it. We don't need the same amount of people here at 4:00 AM that we need at 4:00 PM or 8:00 PM, and so we'll be using, to Commissioner Morey's point, we'll be using some data to show this is why we want to do these kind of things. So the career development plan, the shift tryouts and that kind of thing, and I'll just lump it all together, one of the biggest things that I've been trying to work on and will continue is just the word culture. Things are different now, and I think everybody sees that, and it will continue to get better. I hope that if I'm here three years, if I'm four years, whatever that may be, we don't lose a single person that doesn't go off to something bigger and better, you know, for their personal reasons, not because of something they didn't get fulfilled here in Waxaw. So if you've got any questions, I will entertain those, but that's my spiel. It seems like half the meetings have been about law enforcement tonight, as it is anyhow, but anything for me?
Well, thank you for being open and being able to get the input, and I think that's certainly off to a good start. I think it's been probably something that a lot of them that were thinking about this, but it just wasn't the place or time that they could have that discussion, so I'll applaud you for that, and the officers who are here in this room and who join us everywhere else for feeling free to give input, not only at this time, but during the police study as well, so I want to say thank you personally on that note.
And I'll add finally, that this morning during the meeting about all of the various things, there was one officer in particular that was very passionate about what he was saying, to the point where your voice gets to crack and that kind of stuff, and I won't say heated, he was just very passionate about it, and he came up and apologized afterwards. There's no need to apologize for that. You know, if you're being respectful, I would much rather have very passionate employees than ambivalent employees, and we have some of the best employees bar none, and that includes all of the town employees that I've been working with, so thank you again for the opportunity to keep doing that.
All right, any thoughts, comments around? All right, appreciate that. Thank you very much. All right, we're going to move over to Ms. Dina standing over in the corner, so you're up to bat. Hurry, hurry.
Good evening, I'm Dina Spencey, Park and Rec Director. I'm going to give you a heads up about the upcoming events and some news about the downtown park. So on the 29th, next week, 2:00 PM, we'll be opening up the bids for Phase 2, so this is super exciting. So at the December 13th meeting, we will be looking for recommendations to move forward with that, just to give you a heads up. The new program guide for the fall and spring will be out on December the 10th, right before Touch a Truck, so we'll have our new activities coming up soon, and I wanted to give you all a heads up, there's going to be more to come, but year 2023 is the year of the trail, so we're going to do lots of really cool things that's coming up here concerning putting in more trail areas, just activities, and celebrating that. It's actually a North Carolina law that they, Assembly made. So this is a really big deal for us, and I just wanted to kind of give you a little preview that it's coming up, and you'll hear more about it. So the next coming event is our senior Christmas party, so some heads up's already been given out about being there and be cheerful and be with our seniors that day. We have a waiting list now, it is completely full, so if you still would like to come, please contact Ms. Joan, and she will be happy to put you on that waiting list, and if we have room available, we will definitely fit you in. That is on December the 2nd. Touch a Truck is our new event, and that's going to be really cool at the Community Corner, so on the 10th, at 12:00 in the afternoon. That is a cool way for you to get up and personal on some really different vehicles, like our fire trucks, our police cars, some of Todd's equipment.
Street sweeper.
And so it's going to be awesome, and then Santa's going to be there to be able to take pictures with, and then we'll have some holiday foods and things like that there too. That next day, on December the 11th, is our annual Christmas parade, so be front and center at 3:00 PM for the parade to start. We are going to do a little bit different in our downtown, where we'll have some shuttle opportunities, so you don't have to worry about parking downtown. We'll have from the top end at Forest Hills Church, there's the shuttle stop there, and at Waxaw Elementary, so awesome ways to make it stress-free to calm down to the parade. Reach Across America is December the 17th, at our South Side Cemetery at 12 o'clock, and the menorah lighting is on Wednesday, December the 21st, at 5:00 PM at the Wall of Honor Bandstand area on Main Street, East North Main Street. Do you all have any questions?
Lot of activity coming up to us, be a busy month. Any thoughts, comments for Ms. Dina? All right.
Thank you.
Off the hook, thank you, appreciate that. All right, I think Ms. Lisa wants to come up and tell us some more things.
Just a few project updates. Just today, the Preserve Phase 1 construction plans were approved. We finally got all those outside agency approvals, so we can get that off the list and get them going. We received construction plans for the northwest side of Alma Boulevard. It's about 50,000 square feet of retail office, commercial space. There's five 10,000 square foot buildings, so we're looking forward to working with them, and then upcoming to you all, we have the annexation for Yarborough, that zoning will come to you guys at your December meeting, and then we're finishing up two TIAs, one for the Rogers Pond Property, they've got 124 units there, and then the museum property, it's a town home and mixed-use project, that'll go to Planning Board in December, so you guys should see that in January.
Very good. Town manager has an addition.
Yeah, it's just one thing that I thought that you would find interesting is that the Preserve was a rezoning case back in the summer of 2020, so here we are, two and a half years later, just something to remember how long it takes sometimes even to get to the approved plans.
And if I remember right, the original annexation was 2005? It was way back when.
Way back when.
Right.
Yes, so it...
It doesn't happen overnight.
That's right. Exactly.
That's awesome. So any questions for Lisa before I let her step away? I think we're good. She's trying. What if I want a question? I mean, you know, okay, I appreciate that, thanks. All right, so thank you all again for your participation. I know that we have a couple of comments from Mayor Portem, so I'm going to pass that one over to you. You first.
No, I'm on now. Okay. Good evening, everyone. As many of you already know, and I've already spoke about in the past, part of my service work to the community and my mission work is in helping and serving others in our community. I do that through my work in food pantries and in trying to give back to those who are in need, to children who are in need in any way that my family and I can. So during this holiday season, I would just like you to remember those families who are in need, those families who might need a little extra help, they could be even your neighbors who are right there, who might just need a homemade meal or something brought over to help them out and tide them over. And during this Thanksgiving, tomorrow, my family and I, we will be out in town, and we will be delivering meals to our seniors in working with Ms. Dina and her seniors who need help, to other citizens who are here in the community, and we will be dropping off meals for them, so to ensure that they do have something for Thanksgiving so that they too can be able to celebrate that day. We will also be working with the Charlotte Rescue Mission on Thanksgiving Day, so if you are looking for a way to give back, there are many people who do need you to be there to just maybe give them a meal, give them a hand, and let them know that somebody is thinking about them, for we are truly our brother's keeper, so please keep that in mind, as we also keep in mind the families who lost their loved ones today during this season of Thanksgiving.
Thank you for that, appreciate that. Any other comments? Commissioner Hall, I see you leaning forward.
Mr. Mayor, I have comments to enter into the leadership reports.
Is the mic on? The mic, is it on?
Hello?
Okay, go, sorry.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, town staff, and Waxaw Police Department. Today is a good day. For me, the Waxaw Police Organization and Pay Study represents a significant achievement and a positive step forward. It has been more than a year and a half since I started walking down this path with the Police Department, Town Manager Jeff Wells, and Wendy Davenport, and other members of the town staff. The patience that each of you on the board here provided me at your homes or in the town to discuss my research led us to the Piedmont Triad Regional Council. The valuable study presented by them today has validated our initial assumptions. The road ahead for us will be paved with some difficult decisions, but after today, I am convinced that this board is united in doing what is right and good for our town. To the town staff, thank you for your endless support with my questions and your faith in this meaningful study. In nearly every meeting I attend on behalf of the town, someone always comments about their positive experiences working with each of you. Your dedication to our mission, vision, and values does not go unnoticed. To the Waxaw Police Department, thank you for your patience and faith in our town during this long process. Today is just the beginning, and more work is in front of us, but rest assured that you have the support of this board, admiration, and faith, and a community who love you. Thank you for your service. My fellow commissioners, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I am honored and proud to serve with you today.
Thank you. That's well said. Thank you very much for that. Appreciate it, and I know everybody does appreciate it. We've been getting lots of comments about the collaborative effort. We all serve to do the best thing for the town, and we all know that sometimes we come to discussions and differences of opinion, but we still all show up to the table to make a good decision, at least the best one that we can with our information that we have. So from my standpoint, I'd like to just add on to that as well, so thank you all very much for helping us make the year go the way it has. Thank you all for the service that all of you bring, staff and Police Department, which I consider all one, or one family, one body here, so I want to thank everybody for that, and I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving as well. Any other thoughts, comments around the board? Charlie?
Two quick things. Happy Thanksgiving to all the members of the board and all the employees of the town, and the second thing is, thank you for the adoption of the contract presented. First day I came, it was a privilege to be here, it's still a privilege, and I appreciate the opportunity, and I enjoy working with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Commissioner Simpson, you had a comment?
I did, thank you. This past week, on Monday, the Union County Commissioners held their board meeting, and there's going to be some changes in their leadership as the past election, and I just would like to acknowledge Commissioner Jerry Simpson and the Chairman Dennis Rape, and thank them for their service to the county, and I hope as a board that I continue to look forward to working with Commissioner Richard Helms, Commissioner David Williams, re-elected Commissioner Stony Rushing, as well as Ms. Merrill and Mr. Brian Helms, and I think we have created a very good relationship with our board and their board, and I'm looking forward to continuing that.
Very good, thank you. Yeah, there's lots of changes over there as well, as we all will experience, so it is nice to have the groundwork for a good working relationship. It took a lot of time, all of us, actually, in the last three years to establish that and maintain it. It's been really a good relationship, so thanks to all your efforts collectively and individually as well, because they all mention how nice it is to be able to talk to any member of our board and/or our staff, so appreciate that. All right. Anybody else? I'm going to hold you here for a while. All right, so there's nothing on the closed session for tonight, so who wants to jump up and make the motion? Look at this, I knew it was going to come, I knew it. Motion adjourners up. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Wow, unanimous. Thank you, everybody.